And to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Olaf.
Here.
Mr. Beis.
Here.
Mr. Colero.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Shiffling.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here. Citizens comments?
We have no comment cards this evening, sir.
Thank you. Minutes?
Yeah, next week you'll be asked to approve the minutes of the August 4th and August 11th board meetings.
Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, business and finance?
They'll also be asked to approve the treasures reports and the financial reports for the month of August, if they're available. We have early meetings this month, so sometimes the bank statements aren't out in time to get them approved.
Questions? Seeing none, facility study or business?
Facility study remains a matter of old business until such time as Johnson Controls presents their report. So we leave it on there as a placeholder.
Thank you. Transportation van?
Yeah, we did receive one quote for a transportation van. And I have it, that's from Whiteside Chevrolet, and I have it attached to your documents here. The price of the van that meets our specifications. Let's scroll down here. Forty-four thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars. That compares to the 2011 vans that we bought were thirty-three nine fifty. Obviously, the price of vehicles has gone up significantly from that time. We do have a representative of Whiteside here with us, sir. Thank you for driving in to join us. So if you'd like to talk a little bit about the van, or if the board might have any questions for you, that would be a good time now to do that. We'll ask you to come to the podium because we're on tape. That way you can have the mic pick you up. And again, thank you for driving in.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Brian McCully. I'm the fleet and commercial manager, Whiteside Chevrolet GMC. We're located in St. Clairsville, Ohio, which is just across the border from Wheeling. We're two states away, but not that far. We were asked, we had originally received the bid. On the first go around, we did not submit a response based on the requested delivery time that was stated in the bid. And then, as a follow-up, the school district did contact us. I explained to them the reason why we had not submitted a bid. And we were requested to do so, which you all have copy of now. We can deliver the van by December 31st of this year. And it will fully meet the specifications. I just had a brief conversation with your transportation director. We would deliver the vehicle to your location. It fully meets all of the requirements, and in fact, in some areas exceeds the requirements that you have set forth with regards to some particulars, mostly safety items, that we include on these types of vehicles. Specifically, the vehicle will include a backup camera and backup sensors, in addition to the required backup alarm. The exterior mirrors that were requested, the exterior rearview mirrors of a specific size, will meet that specific size. They will be power, so if there's multiple drivers, they're easily adjustable. They will be heated for inclement weather. And also, they will have not only the flat glass, but they will have the convex glass underneath. General Motors is the, obviously, the producer of the vehicle. With the seating and door requirements, there is a second stage, final stage upfitter that we utilize. That company is called Customizers Incorporated. They're out of Hagerstown, Maryland. They are what is considered a General Motors SVM. And basically, what that is, is a special vehicle manufacturer that does final stage certification to the vehicle. We have done numerous of these vehicles for school districts like yourself. Specifically, St. Clairsville School District in St. Clairsville, Ohio, where our business is domiciled, purchased one. They were so satisfied with it that they purchased a second one. Bridgeport, Ohio School District also purchased one. And ironically, last week, we were just approached by them. They were wanting to get a second one. In addition to that, we are a General Motors Business Elite Dealer. We have a separate and dedicated fleet and commercial sales department. We do have clients in 41 states nationally. With regards to this type of van, we sold a number of them to the state of Vermont Department of Corrections. They actually use them for prisoner transport vehicles. Pricing would include delivery to your location. We are able to accommodate all of the Pennsylvania MV1, Pennsylvania titling. I believe you use official use plates or municipal plates on yours, if I'm not mistaken. We can handle all of the licensing. The vehicle also would be state safety inspected. We use a place in Washington County in Claysville prior to delivery. With that, I would obviously answer any questions that anybody may have.
Mr. Colera?
Servicing of the vehicle. Since you're in Ohio, obviously, that's going to create an issue for you. Any servicing of the vehicle?
No, it will not. Couple of things with regards to servicing of the vehicle. Any General Motors dealer nationally can handle any service and warranty accommodations. Obviously, you're in a more rural area here, but anyone within a two or three hour radius, we will, and I will provide it in writing if you request it so. We will provide pickup and return service of picking the vehicle up, taking it at our location for service, and then returning it should you find that need to. And we'll be happy to provide that during the life cycle of the vehicle. And there is no charge for that. The warranty on the vehicle is three years, thirty-six thousand miles bumper to bumper. For fleet users like yourself, there's a five-year, one-hundred-thousand-mile powertrain warranty on the vehicle. And additionally, your first two services, as far as lube oil and filter and tire rotation, are no charge.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there interest to put this on the agenda for next week?
Alright, so this will go on to the agenda next week. This is not a voting meeting, this is a planning session.
Yes, sir.
This time next week, we'll sit down again, and it'll be a voting session. And then, we would be in contact with you next Friday.
Very well, thank you. One point that if I may add, that I mentioned to your transportation director. This vehicle will be a 2017 model year vehicle. The pricing that we submitted on this quotation is valid for the entire 2017 model year, that if you needed at any point in time to replace additional vehicles or add to your fleet, we will honor that price on any additional vehicles throughout the 2017 model year, which basically, that would take you up to about June or July of next year. So that would preclude any need to go out for additional bid or anything of that nature. It's one service that we provide for the entire model year for our fleet users.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
New business, St. Vincent Prevention Project?
It's recommended that the board approve the 2016-17 service delivery agreement with St. Vincent Prevention Projects. It is exactly the same as it has been in the previous year. Total is twenty-six thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. And that includes 21 days at the elementary school. At the middle, and also workshops, the middle school, junior high school, senior high school, 56 days. Exactly the same service we've had. We've been very satisfied with the service that St. Vincent has provided. So we would ask that you approve this contract for the upcoming year.
Questions on that? Seeing none, work study?
Yeah, some of our students have participated in the past in the Westmoreland Intermediate, you know, work-study program that now does require a contract. So I've asked Mr. Hai Chu to talk to you a little bit about what all that entails, what the program is, how much it costs, and so on.
Ron? If you'd take the podium, please, because of the microphone.
Thank you. The work-study program is an opportunity for us, as a school district, to offer opportunities to our students with disabilities to secure employment post-graduation. Work Discovery Program is currently in its third year at Southmoreland High School. The program is actually shared between Southmoreland High School and Mount Pleasant School District. The program is designed, as I indicated, to help students learn to be successful employees. Once students reach 16 years of age, in 11th grade, and if they have an IEP, they are eligible to participate. The students basically attend the half-day, either in the morning or the afternoon, while earning three credits and a small stipend, so there's the opportunity to earn money. We have a job coach through the intermediate unit by the name of Heidi Miller, who has successfully secured local businesses to participate in this opportunity for our students. So it's wonderful in the sense that it's giving our local students an opportunity for experience in local community businesses. The businesses include at this time Busy Beaver, Kmart, Demo Depot, Peebles, Exella at Frick Hospital, Save-A-Lot, Harmon House, Scottsdale Library, Holiday Inn Express, and YMCA. Each day, students attend a different worksite and are able to rotate through a number of job opportunities. In the past, students have waited tables, provided customer service, food prep, merchandising and warehousing, stocking and rotating on shelves, operating items such as RMU, roving merchandising units, box compacters, clerical filing tax... Pardon me, clerical filing tasks, mass mailings, individual mail sorting with hospital administration, patient escorting, patient welcome packs, central supply, both in stock and in delivery. Students use manual forklifts, have developed basic horticultural skills, just to name a few of the learning opportunities. Recently, we've had some graduates from this program. Alicia Butler has secured full-time employment at Harmon House in the cafeteria. She has recently earned her six-month employee raise and opened her own banking accounts. She has earned her driver's permit and is excited to take her driver's exam. More recently, Chelsea Patton has secured full-time employment plus benefits at the Delalos Warehouse in New Stanton, and she has obtained her driver's license and opened her own banking accounts. Lee Bennett has secured full-time employment at Lake Aron. Lee has his own apartment and vehicle. David Pasula enrolled at Hiram G. Andrews, as did Michael Murfree, who is also at Hiram G. Andrews. Dominique Burke is still active in the volunteer fire department. Currently, we have a number of students in the program. Mark Dillon has participated in this program since his 12th grade year, when the program was brought to Southmoreland High School. His goal this year is to obtain full-time employment at Save-A-Lot or Demo Depot before the end of the school year. Sophie Paparella, Colin Schrock, and Teresa Stenger have started the program year. Also later this year, we're looking forward to Luke Bennett and Megan Oller joining the program as well. If you have any specific questions for me, I can certainly answer those for you at this time. The contracts basically that we currently have for review and approval by the board are specific to those four students that I mentioned that are currently enrolled, and they're at a cost of $7,040 per student.
Any questions? Mr. Colera?
We have a student that participates in one of these programs, but before they get done with the program, is there another agency they get passed on to, to assist them if they do not find full-time employment or some type of continuing education? Are we working with anyone beyond the local businesses to assist these particular students to get employment?
Well, as part of their special education programs and their IEPs, when students reach transition age, they are partnered up with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. So OVR works with these students as well in attempts to getting them opportunities post-graduation. But this particular program is, has been really successful relative to some of those in the county. And I feel very fortunate to have the community participants from the businesses to provide these opportunities for our local students. And the people that are most directly involved with it, Ms. Melissa Farrell at our senior high school, and Heidi, our job coach, are very enthusiastic about the opportunities that these students have had, the range of opportunities and experiences that are provided through a rotation through those various local businesses, and the amount of success we've had. When you look at the students and the names and the numbers of students that I just read to you, for the recent success rate, you'll be hard-pressed to find that level of percentage of success for students with the nature of disabilities graduating from a, you know, county high school in Westmoreland County that have been successfully placed to that extent. So I think it's a very wonderful, a great opportunity for our students, as well as for our community, because it's giving these students an opportunity for meaningful contributorship in their local communities, as well as securing them some positions, and life skills development beyond just jobs, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ron. So we'll have that on the agenda for next week for your consideration. Next item is the scoreboard at Russ Grim Field, and we'll ask Charlie maybe to talk a little bit more about that. But for the most part, the stadium scoreboard lights have been getting dimmer, and some of them are burned out completely. It's hard to see the scoreboard lights when the sun's shining on. We had an offer from Westmoreland Electric, and Charlie can give you the details. And kudos to him, he did a lot of work on this project. They're willing to replace the lighting in the scoreboard, changing the colors from amber to red to make it a little bit more visible. That would be at a cost of $8,200. But Westmoreland Electric is willing to do that free of charge in exchange for having their name on the blank spot on our scoreboard. There was a bank's name up there, and it was one of the banks that was absorbed during the crisis, when the recession hit, and I don't remember which bank it was, I'm sorry to say. So that was taken down, so there was one blank spot up there. And Charlie, if you have anything to add, I would welcome that.
If you all had any question about it? It was something we've been looking at at that board, it's been getting bad. And I don't know, even if you come to some of the major games during the day, they can hardly even see it. It's, the lights really faded. So I was talking to one of the Westmoreland Electric people. They do a lot of business with ISI, who fixes those boards. I think actually, Westmoreland Electric may have put that in here when you guys updated the school. So we got to talking, he went back and talked to whoever, and they're willing to offer us, you know, all brand-new. There are the new LED lights, which will be even brighter, and supposedly lasts longer than what we've had in there. They'll put in the new drivers. It should really, really be nice. When we looked at that board, it's a pretty nice board, and I didn't think we really needed to replace the whole thing, obviously. And with this now, it'll make it like a new board, and I think it's a great opportunity. They were asking for that one spot. They had, they even come up with their own design. Alls it was, was the Westmoreland Electric logo, if you see it on their trucks. And it would just replace that spot, and, you know, I think it's a win-win for all of us. But we just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and if you approve it, we could make this a go.
Are they asking to control the blank spaces for the three other sponsors?
No, they want their sign.
No, they're just taking that one spot.
There's a blank where a bank's name came down.
Yeah.
They want that spot, that's all.
The way it read, I was confused as to whether, you know, you were giving them all of the space.
No, no.
Yeah, the three that are still, they'll still be there. There's just one that there's nothing there, it's just a blank metal spot. It's about a six-by-three foot space, and it would just take that place.
Well, the problem with this area, I mean, obviously, the school board can, if it decides it wants to, pay $8,200 and have it fixed. If you go down the pathway of allowing advertising in exchange for these services, what you're really doing is permitting this advertising with no uniform standard for selling advertising space. And it's the beginning of the kind of legal issues that I talked about in the more distant past, and more recently, we're probably going to be talking about some more. The problem is that you start off looking for someone to do work, and instead, what you're doing is you're giving them a favored spot in advertising without having offered that to other people. So if someone else wants to advertise there, is the price $8,200 now? Is that what it is? I don't know. If that's what you want to do, is sell that advertising space for $8,200 per slot.
The next item to be talked about is indeed advertising. And I would like to find out if there's interest on the board, and if there is, a policy could then be written, developed, so that the advertising can be both uniform and controlled. Other districts are doing it, you know, throughout the area. It seems to me to be, and I understand David's legal concerns, but when we're talking about, you know, limited ability to raise revenues, cutting programs, let's find some creative ways to raise some revenues, and, you know, do it within the confines of good, solid policies so that we don't run into that slippery slope that Mr. Potonic talks about.
David, a question legally, though, if we didn't set a price of $8,200 for that spot, and let's say one of the other spots became open that we wanted to put up there, and someone wanted to do something for $6,200, we're not bound by anything. We can charge whatever we want. Are you saying that we couldn't? There'd be some legal ramifications if we charged a different amount for different people? Why are we bound by a specific amount once this is set?
Well, because it would create the possibility of discriminating against people either based upon the speech itself, or the person proposing to do it. If you're going to advertise on a public bus, you know, you have uniform rates for all. If you're going to, and you get into those kinds of analyses, you also get into issues over how much control you do have over what kind of messages go up. One of my big concerns always is whether the kind of speech that you don't want to see, and you think you can ban, you may not be able to once you go into the business of advertising. That's always been one of my concerns about either groups that are, you know, not thought of well socially, or products that might not be so appropriate for public schools, you know, may try to test the waters and say, "Well, if you're going to let this over here, we want to advertise these other things that you might not, as school board members, think are so great to have available on, being advertised on school property." There's a program that I got some information on this past summer, and there's actually going to be a one-hour session at the upcoming school workshop in Hershey dealing with the same subject area. But, I mean, the real problem is, you think you're going to make money until you get hit with the first suit from the ACLU. So that's just why I'm just advising caution, and it just be thought through. And, you know, if you want this done in 10 days, based upon that swap, you might not be able to do it kosher.
Is there any difference because they approached us as opposed to we approached them?
And the other thing I'll point out is, the scoreboard that was removed from Southmoreland Elementary School when the gym was renovated, had a big Lockinger Chevrolet sign on it, or Pontiac, or whatever Lockinger sold. If you look at that scoreboard now, there are three entities that are already advertising on it. So we've been doing it right along.
It doesn't mean we continue to get away with it, though.
Understood.
But this really is $8,200, because they're just taking care of the insulation. If we did this our own self, it would cost us $8,200. But they're willing to do it for us for free insulation for the, so we don't want that installation cost.
In a sense, it was almost like it was a donation from them, is what they're really putting in. They'll donate the lights.
Basically, they're donating a new.
They just like to have signs.
Right, so they're paying $8,200.
It doesn't matter, it won't matter.
Yeah, but what about the ones that's already on there in the past? Now how do you get that done?
You're doing a swap, which is a commercial transaction. You're selling advertising space, which is a speech issue, in exchange for valuable services, which appear to be $8,200.
We're not actually selling, they're coming.
No, you're giving them advertising space.
Well, how does that...
They're not going to do it.
Wait a minute.
If they want to do it totally for free, and not accept, and not want advertising space, and you don't give them any advertising space, no problem.
Yeah, but how about the ones that's already on it? Did we bring this all up in the past about all this other stuff, about the bank?
We have had, we have had issues in the past that have been discussed about open forums and limited open forums, and different kinds of activities and advertising spaces. Lockinger Chevrolet precedes me by many, many decades.
But the current, but the current three sponsors that are on the scoreboard do not?
No.
How did they get one there?
Probably they donated the...
They donated the scoreboard.
The scoreboard itself.
Or put money toward the renovation of the field.
Also, the three got together and shared the cost of the new scoreboard.
I don't know if all three of them did, but somebody did.
There were actually four at one time.
But you have to understand also that this is an area that's developed through lawsuits and federal courts that, you know, have occurred over a period of substantial time. So I'm just forewarning you that it may look free, but it may not turn out to be that way if things don't go well in the future.
Well, how about this, Dave? How about a comeback would be, if this Westmoreland Electric would take the last slot, then we would have no slots available. So if somebody wouldn't want to come and say, "Well, I wanted to do this," we'll give you that. There's no slots available, so that way we would have some kind of...
The last one? I thought there were three that were still available.
No, there are three spots that have sponsors on them, that have had for years on end. And there's one blank.
Including Lockinger Chevrolet?
No, that's an old scoreboard, that scoreboard's in junk. So there are three entities that are currently advertising there. There was a fourth entity, it was a bank. And the bank went under during the recession not too long ago. And they came and asked to have their sponsorship removed because they no longer existed under that name. I don't know, it could have been. Okay, so there's a blank hole. These people want to fill the hole. So I don't know how simple.
The slots would be filled and we would go with that.
But then, and Bagheel, that's a good question, but then moving on to the next item. We want to talk about, and there's a company called Slam Dunk that actually helps develop policies and do these kinds of things. Why can't we advertise on the fences, you know, and things like that? And start to turn that stadium into a venue. And when I say advertise, I don't want to be advertising, you know, alcohol or, you know, anything of a nature that's not appropriate for kids. You know, we have wellness policies that we have to adhere to and things of that nature. But, you know, why can't we advertise Nike shoes, or whatever the case may be? And I know you're going to tell me why we can't.
Once you open that door, it can be difficult to slam a shut on other people, such as alcohol.
When you go through like this one company, I think I talked about last time, they actually go out, they do it, it's through them. They get the equipment, they give it to us, they do the renting of the signs. Alls we do is approve it. And like he told me, at a certain point, once you approve so many of them, that's it. It's when there's, anybody else wants to advertise, there's no more room. It would be later, whenever, if something ever opens and you want to go through it. And then each year, it goes whatever they set up, say, three years contract or whatever with that advertiser. If we don't get the advertisers, or they withdraw and we lose it. Before we get the equipment, it's no loss to us. But we keep that equipment after that three years. So it's just, it's a matter of this company does it. We don't actually go out and get anybody or try to sell anything, because the company does. It's kind of like those signs.
It might be similar to the companies that come in and donate book covers to our kids, but all the book covers have advertising from Ralph Chevrolet Air, Wise's Restaurant, or whatever the case may be. Mr. Lee just handed me a magnetic calendar that every student in his building got. And who sponsored that, John? Marion Silverdah, right, yeah. But a company went and solicited through her real estate agent, and then she sponsored the calendars for the kids. So this will be a similar thing, am I correct?
This thing Charlie's talking about, that other school districts are doing it. They're very profitable over it, and it's all set up with a contract and the whole nine yards to bring money, more or less, into your school district to pay for stuff that we don't have to pay for. They go out, they do the job, they solicit it, and there's a contract and everything's set up that they will... set up that they will produce after the three years, like scoreboards or whatever, that we don't have to pay for. And it's all on a digital thing on your scoreboard. Mount Pleasant has it, Derry has it, and as far as I'm concerned, we're probably laid back too far that we should be doing it ourselves.
So I guess we were talking about two issues. First of all, is there interest in doing the scoreboard with the advertising? Do you want that on the agenda for next week? And then the other thing I want on the agenda, or I'm asking if you want on the agenda, before we waste a lot of time on talking to this Slam Dunk or another, is there interest in using some advertising on the athletic venues? We're not going to get any proposals or anything else until I get a nod from the board that says, "Yeah, there's some interest," or "No, there's not."
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get those two items on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Con Doc?
Yeah, last month we had a lively discussion about copiers, and I have included their proposal on your board docs document. It's in August 2016, which is their previous proposal. They have submitted a new proposal. Last month, they were going to give us a fifteen thousand dollar, or a five thousand dollar rebate, excuse me. They've given us two options here, one with a fifteen thousand, one with a twenty-five thousand dollar rebate, and I've attached that proposal for you as well. Jim, do you want to talk a little bit about the details here? I know you've been working hard with Noah and some of those other folks. I'm putting you on the spot here. I forgot to warn you I was going to do this.
No, that's okay. No, that's quite all right. This is their proposal to us. We didn't sit down and negotiate this proposal. They, they are trying to respond to concerns that we've had, school buildings with the operability of the current machines. In fact, in the past couple of years, they even replaced some of the machines in the elementary school because the original machines they installed were so problematic. And the ones that are currently there are problematic. Whose fault is it? You know, who knows? Is it their fault? Is it the operator's fault? I mean, somebody walking up and using it. Hate to get into the finger pointing thing, but bottom line is, you know, our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our secretaries, you know, want machines that work when you walk up to them. So in attempt to try to ameliorate, you know, our concerns and, and we're upset with them, no doubt about that. We're pretty passionate about this. They came up with this proposal to swap out all the machines, bring in, you know, more and more heavy-dutyer machines that could handle higher volumes, and in exchange, promising not to increase our, our average monthly costs. In exchange for that, to give them a two-year extension. We're about three months into our, our fourth year, and we're in a five-year agreement with them right now, so in effect, it would, it would be scratching out the balance of the current agreement, and let's say theoretically, October 1st, starting off with a new forty-eight month lease agreement. But this was their comeback to us. We didn't sit down and negotiate these terms or, or costs with them. So, you know, as they say, the ball's in our court. What do we want to do with that? I know there's frustration. Yesterday was first day of school, and, you know, I know Mr. Lee had two of his three teacher systems down, and I know Mr. Mashaw walked over to his building here, and two of his three systems were down, so, and that's, that's very frustrating. I feel for them. I know our little unit in our office has been pretty reliable for us, not that it doesn't have a hiccup or two, but, and they do take care of it. So I don't want to trash in any regards their service personnel. Their, you know, their Johnny's on the spot when, when called, but they seem to live here, and we don't want that, and I don't think they want that either. So this is their idea to try to, try to remedy that. It's somewhat of a leap of faith, and some of us are not, not quite comfortable with that, I suppose. We've had them now for, you know, we're into our, our fourth year with them, so they want to give us a guarantee that, you know, that these machines will satisfy, so what can I say? Working with the sales representative the last two days, you know, trying to get apples-to-apples comparison, our numbers are pretty close in comparison. Now, there's still some vagaries there. A big part of the lease is what we currently pay for the units, and as you know, that's ten thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-seven cents per month, and they're proposing to blend that in. Also, we pay for overages on the color copiers. They're called cubes, so there's a separate billing for that when we go over the allowances, and we do. And then, of course, there's the little cost per copy agreement we have with the business office copier, and right now, our average monthly cost from my perspective is higher than what, what the salesman shows, so I was trying to, he and I are trying to come to an agreement on that. I have eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars per month average, based on last year's cost for running all these machines. He's in the ten thousand, six hundred dollar range, so I'm not sure why. I mean, I believe my numbers, that's what we paid out. So from his standpoint, you know, his proposal would, would benefit us by about eleven hundred dollars per month. But there's some things that, like I told him, I said, you know, we didn't negotiate this proposal, they gave it to us. So if we were to sit down and negotiate a different proposal with some different terms, and, and he said he'd have to run it up the flagpole with, you know, their corporate staff, their big bosses, but there are things I'd like to eliminate. I'd like to eliminate any, any chance for overage charges. That's annoying. I'm greedy. I want unlimited color copying. They're giving us unlimited black and white. I want unlimited color copying, and we, right now, they supply all the toner we need. We have to buy the staplers. I'd like to have the staplers too supplied to us. So there's some, some counters that I, that I gave back to the salesman. I told him, I said, "Tonight is not a decision meeting, it's a discussion meeting. If we move forward with their, their proposal or with, you know, some amendments to it, you know, that decision could be made next week and possibly for an October start," so that's where I'm at with it. Thanks, Jim. Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Jim, one of the things that I'd be interested in seeing if we can negotiate with them is something where there would be a review after the first two years to determine if our usage has gone up or down, and adjusting the contract certainly downward if we are reducing the number of copies. As I indicated last time we had this discussion, we're talking about moving into electronic age here, and I think that by virtue of the fact that we have agreed to purchase and are getting chromes for all of our students with the exception of pre-K and...
K-1.
Pay one. You know, again, we should be looking at ways to reduce the amount of paper that we're actually using, you know. Again, I don't have a problem with the contract as it stands now with the need for new machines. I, I just have a problem with they're feeding us more sugar and we're, and we're diabetic. They're saying you can have all the copies you want maybe, and, you know, go ahead, get them as long as you just give us two more years of a contract of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars each year. And again, I would hope that, that we would be able to change the culture somewhat here without having to be continually using as much or more or more paper continually. And I'd like to see something in the contract that allowed us at least to look at what our paper usage is so that we can change the culture, get the usage down, and maybe get a better contract two years from now, as opposed to locking ourselves in for four years, basically a half a million dollars. And, and we'll be still using all the paper we want to use, that's true, but we won't have changed anything here. And then what will we do with the end of the fourth year? We'll still be using tons of paper, and we'll have to have another contract that allows us to do the same thing.
Yes, I, I asked that question, oh, that was yesterday, it seems like...
It was yesterday.
A week ago. I asked them about that, and his answer is, "Yes, we can provide this, and we can do so every few months." Well, I want something more than that. I, I want to write in that, and they'd probably come back and say, "Well, what if your, your volume goes up? Can we ask for an adjustment upwards?" You know, my thought is, if the volume is actually, actually goes down, can, can we get an adjustment downwards? So I, I think in spirit, they agree with that. It's just a matter of working out the how-to. So yes, I agree with that. If, if we can manage to get volumes down, can they adjust the, the cost to us? Can the cost come down?
It would seem to me the way they would do that would be by putting lower volume machines in, taking the higher volumes and then releasing them elsewhere. Because you're leasing...
You mean at the end of the two years?
Yeah, because you're, you're leasing the machine based on the cost of the machine.
And, and would be all right to do that as long as our volume was down. We wouldn't need the heavier duty machines. We wouldn't be looking for them.
Correct.
Now, the thing to go with that, Jim, and I, and I agree with them, again, being, being fair and equitable, I would say, yes, if our volume does go up, maybe they do deserve more money for the contract, but the fact remains that, again, maybe we need to come to some figure there where we say, you know, if it's within this limit, it stays the same. If it drops down by this percentage, we get a reduction. If it goes up by this percentage, then we would consider giving you more. I mean, again, in fairness, it's, it's kind of like what we do when we, what we do for our energy. If it's over a certain amount, then make the adjustments.
I don't know, I think it was like five years, five years ago, at Leader Valley, we did negotiate that type of clause in an agreement with a company called Amcon, that after one year, we would sit down and review our volumes, and, you know, if volumes did go down, there would be, you know, a price reduction. That kind of gives you the incentive then to watch your, your volume, try to, try to work in some control, so, again, they're, they're open to discuss that, to review it, how you work in the terminology, you know, that, that would be, have to be determined. And there was some terminology I didn't like in the boilerplate lease agreement from Xerox. And again, they expressed, you know, willingness to, to work with us on, on that terminology. As far as, you know, controlling, limiting usage, kind of try to change that, that mindset that you could, you know, walk up and just fire off a hundred copies without any, any thought to it. You know, they, the answer they had there, try to implement some kind of controls, they said, "We can put codes on the copiers for each teacher, staff member." What does that mean? Well, that, that could mean that, you know, each, each staff member might be limited to, let's say, a thousand copies. And so then you have to be judicious when you walk up and how many copies you run. It's just an idea. We faced such a thing many years ago, back down at the university when I worked there. They can get us, again, we're, we're not worried about our black and white usage, but they can, they read the machines, so they can get us a report on, on that, that usage.
I mean, we certainly changed our culture here. We're all sitting in front of a Chromebook, and no longer do we have them delivered to our door. So, and looking at the, I'll look at myself, looking at the age of this individual, if I'm able to make those adjustments, I certainly think that our teachers and the parents of the students will be able to make those adjustments just as easily as we were. Again, I, again, I'm not, I know they need the copiers, and I know we need to pay them what we're paying them. I just don't want, again, lock in something that, I mean, if they're willing to give us unlimited black and white, I believe, Jim, and unlimited color, if they give us that, why would they do that unless they're making money? I mean, they're not giving it away, so they must be, they, they're glad that we'll have a four-year contract with us because they're going to make money on that four-year contract. I'm saying, if we change our culture, they're really going to make some money. But I, I don't know what you can do, Jim. I don't know if you can continue to discuss that with them or...
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied with the unit that's in my office.
We'll send everybody down to your office to copy.
The only dissatisfaction is, and you hear from others, you know, you, you don't have the speed that you would like to have with it, so, you know, you live with a slower speed. You know, if you adjust units because of lesser volume, what, what they're going to do is they're going to put units of lesser speed.
Right.
So then you'll have that issue. I'm tied up waiting for copies to come out, and I'm not watching my classroom, or I'm not in my classroom, I'm now taking ours. So, you know, there's that trade-off, you know. You want a more robust machine to get faster output? It'll handle more volume.
You don't have any figure though as to number of copies that we actually make every month. I mean, I, I'm not saying this is the case, but if it's...
No, it's, 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 that statistic, that statistic is achievable to get.
Right.
We've had no need to, to monitor that because of the structure of the agreement.
So in reality, if we're paying ten thousand dollars a month for the contract, for all we know, if all we got were ten thousand copies, we paid a dollar a copy for all we know. Now, I know we didn't make ten thousand copies, but in theory, if that's all we made, we paid a dollar for every copy. We just don't know what we're paying for copies.
Probably ten times that, maybe more.
Don't these machines have counters on them? I mean, how do they know the overage?
Well, they do have counters on them.
They do. We don't know what it is.
Well, why don't we just ask them?
We can't.
They're billing us for it.
Well, no, they're not.
They're not billing us for it.
They're, they're billing us to use them. It's a lease. It's like going to rent a car, and, and they don't care how many miles you put on it. Right?
Right.
So you don't care how many miles you put on it, just bring it back with gas in it. Okay, so you drive it for fifty miles, you might drive it for a hundred miles, you're returning it to Enterprise or Hertz, you've paid your thirty-five bucks a day, and you drive as many miles you want. Same thing here. We're, we're renting the machine, we're not, we're not purchasing, these are not leases to own, these are just operating leases, and they're giving you the, the black and white clicks, no problem. They'll charge you, they, they give us an allowance for so many color copies, and then over that, you know, you pay for the overage. Okay. So, yeah, there's no need for us to care how many black and white copies we make.
So we really don't know, Ken, what we're paying for copies. So if it's, if it's, like I said, if it's ten thousand copies, it's a dollar a copy. If it's a hundred thousand copies, it's ten cents a copy. We don't know.
I think we need to ask.
I asked that, and he said, "They can provide it if we want it," so...
So why can't we get that if we're under a contract?
Yeah, we can, we can get it without any problem. We just haven't had a need to because no matter, we're renting the machine, we're not, we're not paying by, some leases in the old days, we're paying two cents a copy, one cent a copy, whatever it was. That's not the case here. It pays to the machine. Mr. Pushgar probably knows this better than I do. There's, there's probably software somewhere in, in one of the computers, or maybe in, in the, in the ConDoc mainframe that can read each copier, because they're all linked to the internet. You know, you can, you can print to them from your, your computer, they...
They used to have meters on them, you could subtract.
Yeah, in the old days, you had a meter.
But they don't have those anymore.
You could go up there and read it. You don't need, you know, you have to press buttons, it's all digital now.
John, you want to elaborate there?
We run a collection software, an agent on our network, on a, you know, a computer on our server that communicates with all the copiers and any printers that we have under their contract that they service. They were originally our printers, our HP printers, but they took over service of those, so those count in our black, since they're black and white. They, they count under, they provide us all the toner and everything on those as well. So this, it's called TD Audit, and it's, it pulls the network, communicates with all the network devices that are involved in printing, and it gives them, that's how they do their page count. So, I mean, that, that can tell you the volume of any of the machines.
Do we have access to that, or do we have to...
Yes. Yes. Interpreting that to cost per page, I couldn't help you there.
No, but you can tell me.
But I can give you volume, I can give you page counts.
You can tell me, "Last year, we made X amount of copies per month," or X amount of copies per year.
On a, on a per-device basis, yes.
On a what?
On a per-device basis, yes. I don't know that I would be able to give you a cumulative total, total for all the devices.
Yeah, but if I have a per-device, then we can just add, and you can get that.
Right.
And again, what I'm getting at here is, let's suppose, John, that you do that, and you do the twenty machines, I think is what we have right now, and let's say it came out to ten thousand copies per machine per month, okay? So we now know the total volume that we're getting in copies, and we know what we're paying, so we know what cost per copy we're paying. And my point here is, if we find out we're making five hundred thousand copies a month, yeah, we're probably getting a great deal, but maybe we ought to do something about needing five hundred thousand copies a month. You know, and that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that we're not, we're, we're taking advantage of... not, we're, we're taking advantage of what we're getting from them. But do we need to look and say, "Maybe we need to stop using it so much so that they don't have an argument that you're getting your money's worth out of us because you're getting a lot of copies for a very cheap amount? Maybe we don't need so many copies."
Give me those, can you give me those figures before?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Seeing none. PSBA officer election? Yeah. Next week, you'll be asked to vote for a slate of candidates for PSBA officers. Those are in the attachments. Looking at that, it appears to be something put together by a nominating committee with one candidate per office. So you would, I guess, be asked to cast the unanimous ballot unless one of you wants to run and nominate yourself and get a vote to be PSBA president. So we'll ask you to cast that unanimous ballot so that we're on record. And that, folks, is all I have for public consumption.
Any citizens comment?
Oh, you do have a resolution here. Just didn't make it on the board docs because you've got a copy form. Mr. Potonic will be asking for permission to attend the school law workshop at the PSBA convention, which is Thursday, October 13th. So I'll have that on your, on your agenda for next week as well, if that's acceptable.
Any board members, anything for public? Need a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Senator.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Mrs. Shipley. All those with favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.